And welcome to the April 24th, 2014 Longview City Council Meeting. We appreciate y'all being here tonight. The prayer and pledge will be led by Sandra Borman, the Family Minister of Alpine Church of Christ. Would you please stand?
Shall we pray? Dear Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you for the many blessings that you have given us. Thank you for life itself, for our health, and for our friendships. Thank you for the ability to have freedom to come here tonight, and thank you for your love for us. I want to lift up our mayor to you tonight, and the Longview City officials, and for this council. Please grant them wisdom, confidence, and the ability to work together in harmony, and a personal peace in their own private lives, and the joy it comes from this work. Please bless this agenda before them tonight, and help them to make the decisions that would benefit those who live and work around our beautiful and beloved city of Longview. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Citizen comment. First comment card I have is Ms. Brenda Woolridge.
My name is Brenda Woolridge. I've lived in Longview for over forty years. I live at 2217 South 13th Street in Longview on the south side of town. I have three things that I want to bring to your attention. It won't take me very long. The first one is the curbing and guttering of 13th Street, starting from the 2200 block to the end of the 2300 block. In that area, that's the only area that is not curved and gutted. I've been seeking to get this done for quite a while, and it's been over almost twenty years since we requested this to be done. And the people that I talked to, I was told that it was not a priority, and that it had to come in at a certain time, or the funds wasn't there and everything.
That CIP program, didn't they tell you? They told you that CIP list, right?
No.
They didn't? Okay.
Yes. I heard the CIP. That's among one of the things that I was told.
That magical list where it never...
That was one of them. Not only that, I talked to a couple of council members, I talked to the people that work at the city, and this is what I told, I was told. And I went to several meetings and requested this, and I'm not the only one that has asked this of the city. And my question to you all tonight is, what is the requirement to become a priority to getting this area done? If it takes over twenty years to be a priority, I don't know if I have that long enough to live, you know, to get it done. It hasn't been done in twenty years. And another thing was that the mowing of the vacant lots on the south side of town. We have had various lots that I have called in myself reporting, and sometimes it gets done, and sometime it doesn't. And then when they do it, the lots are mowed in the middle, and all the grass is tall around the edges, then they blow it into streets, they cut down the limbs, and leave them there. There has been a company, I guess by Swepco, that has been coming around and cutting limbs down off the lines, which we very much appreciate, but we would like for them to take it with them. You know, they leave it on the street, they leave it in the lot where they're cutting them down, and it looks bad. It looks bad. We're not asking you to clean up residents because that's not your responsibility, it's ours. But there are residents that live in this area that do want their homes and their areas cleaned. They do want them kept up. And the fact that we pay taxes just like everybody else does, you know, I own my home, so therefore I've been paying taxes for quite a while, and I'm not the only one. But I feel that, you know, just as we pay taxes to get some things done in our area, we deserve that just as well as anybody else. And I took it on myself to take liberty to drive around south Longview. I drove around north Longview, and that is a great difference in the upkeep. I've talked to several people at the city that works for the maintenance and stuff, and I've always been told that, you know, that's a precedence. Northside takes a precedence. I don't know if it's true or not, but this is what I've been told.
Okay. Just one second. Your time's expired, but let me just say this, ma'am. Ms. Williams has done an outstanding job of reporting to the city, you know, issues along those lines. And I remember you came to her town hall meeting, and we discussed this, and I'm going to ask Cash to go over with you exactly how that CIP program, project list, works, because I know exactly where you're coming from. When I first got in the council, people kept telling me that their project got put on the list. And that list is one of those mythical things to get you to quit calling them. So we have since that time been chipping off at that CIP list, and we continue to do so. So she can explain exactly how it's prioritized. The thing about northside versus southside comes to clean up, that's not true. The big difference is so much of that area is new, whereas south Longview is our original, okay? That's our original footprint. So, you know, that's where a lot of that comes from. We have contractors that we contract with annually to go around to those vacant lots to cut them, and then we turn around, as I understand, and we bill the owners that were issued a citation and did not follow through and cut their lots. So we actually charge it back to them. And Ms. Hill typically organizes and coordinates that, so we'll double-check into that, too. Go ahead.
May I say one thing to that?
Sure.
I'm aware of Ms. Williams doing that. I've talked to Ms. Williams, and she has been to the city, I'm aware of that, and I know that she's done all that she knows to do. That's why I'm here, because, like you said, Longview is the new, but the old is the reason the new is here.
There you go.
So it's just like us as parents, you know, the kids wouldn't be here if it wasn't for us.
I hear you.
So that's really why I wanted to address that, and thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Woolridge. Thank you for coming, and I just would like to ask staff, please, too, especially during these months of the year, and throughout the entire year, really, pay closer attention to south Longview. I do see some areas consistently that are in a rye, and they need some careful consideration. And so sometimes, you know, when you're in a park and you see some litter that may be adjacent, someone has thrown out a bag, take the time to pick it up, please. And this is a plea. I know the mayor has made this plea on numerous occasions, and as the representative of that district, I will ask the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Steve Crane.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, citizens of Longview. As citizens, it is our patriotic duty to hold accountable those in public service and office who make decisions negatively affecting the community. Based on the documents provided in the response to our Open Records Act request, the Longview NAACP has drawn the following conclusions. The manager of the MODCOB and the Public Information Officer were given the authority by the city manager to hire the headliner and go over budget for the Fourth of July event, not the community services director. The February 24th, 2014 email canceling the concert entitled "Sad News" was blind copied to eleven employees. Almost fifty percent of those included in the email believe that the headliner was a positive for the city. There is no record, the Freedom Celebration Committee was informed or consulted to hire the headliner. The first record of the Unity and Diversity Committee being invited to a planning meeting is February 27th, 2014, even though they were made part of the Fourth of July celebration. In 2011, three female African-American city employees were suspended and put on probation for their improprieties. The most severe disciplinary action for the fourth event was a written warning to the community services director, the least involved of the three. The Public Information Officer was later promoted in spite of their complicity in this fiasco. These conclusions reveal a lack of oversight and poor lines of communication, and a culture at the highest level of city management of intolerance, insensitivity towards the city of Longview staff as a whole, and the community at large. And it also shows a double standard in promoting and disciplining people of color. The Longview NAACP holds accountable individuals and organizations when the evidence shows injustice has been done. The Longview NAACP is focused on fairness. We are not confrontational, but we will not back down or go away when we are right. We are a very inclusive, diverse, and representative group of people who care about the direction of our city, country, and county. We provide the community opportunities addressing issues of financial security, youth, and law enforcement, health fares, to name a few. We lift people up. We don't tear them down. I'm here tonight because Brandon could not be here.
Okay. Mr. Crane?
Yes.
We appreciate your time.
I wanted to make this as a recommendation to the city. We would like to come back and have this as an agenda item on the city council.
You not discuss that, and we will definitely take that up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. No. No. Listen, you know, I appreciate Mr. Crane. I'm sorry Mr. Brandon couldn't be here tonight, but, you know, there comes a point in time where, you know, all the truth needs to get out, okay, and exactly what took place. And I know on the side of the NAACP, you're not exactly telling everything, and we'll get to that when we go through these recommendations, and we will point by point show where there's inconsistencies there. I understand what the program is, but this community is moving forward. Okay.
Councilman, Mayor, City Manager, I'm down here tonight for the guy that he just fired. Said he resigned with pressure. Chuck Ewen had to resign. Y'all fired him, gave him fifty thousand. I guess the engineer had to leave. I want to talk about the engineer just a second. He might have not changed his license in the state of Texas. He still was an engineer. If I moved to Arkansas, Louisiana, another state to cut hair, I'd have to get me another license.
For that state?
I don't understand. This is, I thought with the United States of America, I didn't know we had fifty countries inside this America, but we do, because every state's different laws. Shouldn't be. If that man was qualified to do the job with those licenses that he had, he shouldn't have had to worry about a state of Texas license. It should have been, you know, I can't understand this. I understand that Keith Cummings did an outstanding job. I understand the city manager bragged on him several times, then all of a sudden we made a bunch of promotions or something, and all of a sudden he wasn't doing his job. I know one man, I'd be worried. I'd be watching my back door. I'd hire somebody. That's Mr. Bonds, because that's about the only man left that's on this city that I know has done a real outstanding job. And I thought Keith had done a good job, Chuck had done a good job, and I'm pretty sure this engineer did a good job. I'm really upset about it. The city of Longview, the people I talked to is kind of upset about it, but everybody sits in the closet and says nothing. A lot of people laugh at me because I come down here and voice my opinion. I'm an American. I'm not a Democrat, a Republican, or a third party. I am an American, and I'm going to voice my opinion as long as we got freedom of speech. That might be taken away from us, but I still, I'm kind of upset about it. I think a few more people should be fired on this deal. They won't happen because they're in charge of everything. And all these new appointments we made, I don't see that, but I could bring up a lot more, and it would really stir up a house fire. After I was here last council meeting on Ted Nugent, which I still haven't heard nothing about him, or his songs, or nothing, I got an anonymous letter, everybody that was involved in that. Y'all have seen my letter. Kind of upsets me that if we lose sixteen thousand some odd dollars because of something, I can't understand why we pay thirty-five thousand and get somebody to come in here singing anyway. I don't care, Willie Nelson or who. When you got local bands here, it would probably have been enjoyable. Or school bands would have come here with school choirs to sing and do a program. Pay them a fee of five thousand dollars, it wouldn't have been nothing what you were out and what probably you're going to be.
All right, Mr. Martin.
I quit. I appreciate it, and I think it's a waste of money.
Good deal. We know exactly, we know how you feel, my friend. Go cut some hair.
You really don't.
Yeah, well, don't. Guess you ought to go talk to your state legislator about whether or not an engineer got to be licensed in Texas or not. I don't think we can do a whole lot about that. Okay. We're going to go to presentation items. Update on, excuse me. Yeah. Do we need to do these proclamations first?
Yeah.
Okay. We've got some proclamations. Let's do those first.
All right. Well, y'all just smile just a little bit, my God. Okay. I need the representatives from the utility billing staff.
Here they come. I know. Look how nice they look. Okay. Well, we got the billing department to come in here and talk about the Drinking Water Week. That is correct, right?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Drinking Water Week, May 4th through the 10th, 2014. Whereas for more than thirty years, the American Water Works Association and its members have celebrated Drinking Water Week as a unique opportunity for both water professionals and the communities they serve to join together to recognize the vital role water plays in our daily lives. Access to safe and reliable water is crucial for the health and economic vitality of every community, and water is an increasingly precious local and global commodity. A water future that is reliable, safe, and secure gives Longview an economic advantage over other parts of the country. Having been uniquely blessed with sufficient, high-quality, and good-tasting water for the next fifty years that we are all stewards of, upon which future generations will depend, each citizen of our city is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water. So therefore, I, J. Dean, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview, do hereby proclaim May 4th through the 10th, 2014, as Drinking Water Week in Longview. Thank y'all so much for coming tonight. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Y'all look so pretty in those purple shirts. See, look, I got that purple tie, man. Mr. Gary got a purple tie. Mr. Sims got a purple... Hey, 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 hey. We got our TCU ties on tonight. Okay. We've got another proclamation, and we've got Ms. Carol Abira, representing Community Education Coordinator for the Women's Center of East Texas. Well, that's what the paper says.
Yeah, I'm kidding. She's opposite.
Okay. And I'm sorry, and your name is?
Dawn Griffin.
Dawn Griffin.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. Okay. And this is a proclamation commemorating Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2014. Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member of Longview. Rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community, as seen by statistics indicating that one in five women will have experienced sexual assault by the time they complete college. We must work together to educate our community about what can be done to prevent sexual assault, and holding perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. The Women's Center of East Texas encourage every person to speak out when witnessing acts of violence, however small. So therefore, I, J. Dean, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview, Texas, do hereby proclaim April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Longview. Thank you, ma'am, for being here. And thank y'all very much for what you do. We all hear a lot about the Women's Center, and it breaks your heart, some of the cases that y'all deal with, but know our thoughts and prayers with y'all. Thank you very much for what y'all do. Okay. Now, presentation item. Update on Longview Transit Operations. Scott Lewis.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to update you on the status of Longview Transit. As many of you are aware, last month, in March, marked our eleventh anniversary for transit in the city of Longview, and our ridership continues to grow. Ms. Williams is the transportation liaison, and she sits on our Public Transit Access Committee, and her, along with our former chair, Steve Crane, at the last meeting, thought it'd be nice to update the council on where we are, where we're going, and maybe some challenges that transit will be facing. Ridership continues to increase. As you can tell, in 2012, we had almost a twenty percent increase. That was due to an expansion of services. We extended hours, one hour during the week, and two hours on Saturday, so the riders certainly took advantage of that. Year-to-date, we're up almost nine percent for the current fiscal year. I'm going to have to let you do that. Revenue vehicles, we have eight fixed route vehicles, seven of them international, which is the bottom picture, and then we have the one Eldorado, the thirty-five foot, that we just purchased in January, and that's the top picture, and we have five pair of transit vehicles. Staff, we have a total of thirty staff, seven are part-time. As you can tell, the bulk of them are our drivers, eighteen drivers. The rest, the next would be our mechanics, which is four mechanics plus a supervisor, and then we have just our dispatchers and our other support and administrative employees. Where our money comes from? Forty-five percent of our current operating budget for this year is from the Federal Transit Administration. Tech stock, twenty-two percent. The city of Longview's contribution is sixteen, and then our Fairbox recovery is eleven. Industry-wide, ten to twelve percent is average for Fairbox recovery, so we're kind of right there in the middle. And then regional maintenance, EdCog has, we have a contract with EdCog and Kilgore to maintain the go-bus fleet, and that brings us about a hundred thousand a year, which basically just extends the life of our current grants. We have to spend regional maintenance and Fairbox revenue before we can spend any grant money, so that basically just extends that lifecycle. Our expenses, obviously operations is the bulk of it.
Give me one second. Where is the revenue for, you know, what you charge riders?
That's the Fairbox.
Oh, that's the Fairbox?
That's the Fairbox.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry.
Expenses, the bulk is obviously the operations, which is driver salaries, benefits, fuel, and then just the liability workers' cop insurance is the bulk of that, followed by maintenance, administration, and then we have some grant money specifically for mobility management and planning. Capital projects for this year, there's basically three of them. We had, we got three bus shelters. The bulk of that came from a community development block grant from the Longview Housing Department. Our thirty-five-foot bus, FTA paid eighty percent of that. The city of Longview is twenty. We had a bus that insurance proceeds, we had a bus that was totaled last summer, and while we certainly would prefer to have that bus still in our fleet, the proceeds that we got from the insurance had to be applied back into the fleet system, and so that actually reduced the contributions this year, which was, which was nice, but again, we prefer to have that bus actually on the, on the street. And then we're doing a maintenance renovation that's a hundred percent paid for by FTA this year, and I believe council approved that probably about the last two meetings ago. And just basically because of the growth in ridership, the bigger buses, we've kind of outgrown our current facility, and so we are expanding that. Our PTAC board, it meets the last Tuesday in odd-numbered months. Certainly, the public's welcome. Y'all are welcome. Keith Bonds is the staff liaison. Karen Owens from the NPO sits on there, along with Ms. Williams. I know Mr. Smith comes from time to time to our meetings. At the last PTAC meeting, which basically got us to this point, a future challenge is basically going to be bus replacement. We're kind of to that point that bus replacement is going to be what we're going to be trying to figure out how to handle. It's not a problem that's unique to Longview. It's a problem countrywide. MAP-21, which is the current funding FTA stream for surface transportation, was signed in 2012, and it expires this fiscal year. While it did increase some overall operating funding, it did decrease capital funding for buses and bus facilities. It went from almost a billion dollars, nine-hundred-and-eighty-four million, down to four-hundred-and-twenty-two million. So basically, a fifty-seven percent reduction in capital across the board, and so that's kind of affecting everyone, and that's kind of where we're at. Our, in a perfect world, we'd like to replace one bus a year for the next six or seven years, which would replace the fleet. That money's probably not going to be there. We're probably going to have to do every other year, every third year, and so just something to make you aware of. I've got our director of maintenance, who's going to go over the last couple of slides that'll just kind of show you where we are on our maintenance of buses, and while the maintenance staff does an excellent job, we've got some excellent mileage of our current buses, they are certainly getting aged.
Council, citizens, my name is James Torres. I'm the director of maintenance for the city of Longview Transit. What you see before you is the current from fiscal year 2005 to 2013. This is all the expenses per bus broken down. The yearly cost, the total cost to maintain these buses, obviously, the 2001s and 502s, that's the 2005, that's the year, six, seven, and eleven, and so on. Okay? So you can see that our fleet is aging. We've got half of our fleet that's past its life expectancy, so that's going to be an issue that's going to be brought up. We've only purchased one bus since 2011, so that's pretty substantial there. That's the next slide there. That's our current fleet with the new bus. This is the projected from 2014 to 2018, if we weren't to buy any more buses, if we were just to stay with the current fleet. If you'll notice, the number jumped a hundred thousand to maintain them. Okay? That's only going to increase as the fleet gets older. So the challenge is, is how to replenish the fleet without breaking the bank, so to speak. And that's what we're coming before council, is how can we resolve that issue without coming to y'all and saying, we need 1.9 million dollars to replace the fleet all at once. We would like to have a better program to replace the fleet in a more fiscal manner. Any questions?
So, I think as we move into the budget, we start looking at that, but I tell you, we got a really big problem. Several of us were in Washington, D.C. two, three weeks ago, and let me tell you what, those federal dollars you're looking at, they're going away.
Yes.
And if they don't come up, of course, you can forget about them coming up with anything this year, but if they don't come up with some way to address the gasoline tax and the pot of money that supports all these programs, they're going to be, pretty much they're going to bankrupt that whole firm, that whole fund, and that could happen, I think, this year. So, one thing we as a community have to look at, and that was one of the big issues when the decision was made to offer public transportation, is what happens if federal or state monies go away? Okay? So, as we move into budget and we start talking about replacing and replenishing buses, we also need to think about, you know, maybe starting a crew for the dwindling amounts of federal monies that are going to be available. So, Richard, you have something?
Yeah, actually where I was going, Mr. Mayor. James, right?
Yes.
The, I know our fire chief and our police chief have, within their budget, they have money that's set aside, so they're not having to write a check for a million-dollar fire truck, or, you know, ten squad cars at fifty grand apiece. Y'all have something like that in your budget already, or not?
No, not currently.
Any plans for that?
Well, the FTA doesn't allow...
Oh, risk.
It's kind of a reimbursement. When we spend money, then we basically do a drawdown, so it's not, we're not allowed to actually set up a surplus and save.
Wow. What's the thought process behind that?
Well, the FTA doesn't...
As if we expect logic out of Washington, right?
The FTA doesn't want you to hoard the money and gain... The FTA doesn't want you to hoard the money and gain interest on it, and...
Ah, okay.
That's the logic behind that.
Okay.
They, they, it's mainly just for expenses, that's all it's for.
Great.
So, they don't allow us to set aside some money and say, "Okay, this is for rolling stock."
Got it.
They don't allow that.
So, when, when we buy a new bus, the city buys it all and so on, or do we get participation from state and federal funding?
Again, about 80% of that last bus came out, came from the feds, but it was basically operating money. It was money that we've been able to surplus...
From your operations.
Based on regional maintenance and just cutting expenses, 'cause technically, we're operating off 2013's money. We have not actually got into 2014 yet, but we're very close. The last couple of years, we've been able to actually send those grants out, but we're pretty much closing that gap to the point that we're gonna be caught up pretty soon, and...
And y'all are in the same fiscal year that we are?
Yes, sir. Now, of course, y'all approved the second bus purchase in December, which will, will be okay, but beyond that, it's kinda where we're just...
We're still looking to purchase six more vehicles to replace the six remaining of the aging bus.
Over what period of time?
We're, we were hoping in the next, like, a five-year timeframe, you know, but...
Again, one a year would be perfect, but that's probably not...
Probably not reality.
Yeah, because if we go one a year, we'd have to go eight years out, and by the time we reach the eighth year, the first bus we purchased is gonna be right back to square one.
Well, now's a good time to be talking about this, because budget's coming up. Ms. Williams, you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you guys for your presentation. We've been in discussions about this, this is very important. In terms of public transportation, this is something specific to the public, and it affects all of us. And so, as the mayor just stated, we are in budget time, season, right now. Contrary to others, I do believe that there's a light at the end of the tunnel, and we have to prioritize what has a significant impact on the entire community. We're in it, we have a fleet, we have an operations location, so, I'll piggyback off the mayor, we need to move forward. And that being said, again, I think this is a great time for the Council to be made aware, and also, I want to acknowledge that we have two other very hard-working staffers from Longview Transit here, Demaya Pentecost and Ms. Taquita Mumphrey, who has been a management supervisor for many years, and just thank you all for the work that you're doing with Longview Transit. Thank you.
Okay. So, what did Randy Jackson say? You in it to win it. So, if we're gonna win it, we better get to figuring out how we're gonna do this. Let, let me, one other thing, and it's maybe a little bit off of your presentation, but there was something in the paper today about Spring Hill not having but one route or some deal that doesn't go far enough?
To give this a little bit of...
Spring, Spring Hill having one route?
Somebody was going by the school, but...
Well, the ridership was... Yeah. Taquita's quote was in the paper, so...
I thought it was a good decision.
The Spring Hill...
Just, just I mean the routing in the Spring Hill area that...
Yes. We had a safety issue going out in Spring Hill, because it was a school out there. We were looking for getting a bigger bus, which we did purchase this year, and that bigger bus is a safety issue, because at 3:30, when the children are released, they are in the streets, you have other cars, parents, and it was a safety issue. We looked at the ridership in that area, and we did not have a big ridership count in that area, so we pulled the bus back to Sherrell Street to, for safety. It was a safety issue. We are looking at possibly becoming a will call, if we have someone in that area and they need a ride, we have will calls on the routes, so we are possibly looking at that in the future, because we are getting a few calls.
I just, I mean, it was there in the morning, and I just wanted to know exactly what that was about.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, thank you. Mr. Allen?
A couple of questions. Thank you.
It's just a small question. Now, how are these buses, what's the fuel to use? What fuel?
Diesel.
Diesel?
Yes.
Is there any program for natural gas, or is that in your...
Well, right now, no, because the natural gas...
Or propane, or but, propane, yeah.
It'll just add more to the cost. Right now, the, the buses that we're looking at...
Now, I don't mean conversion, but I mean buying new buses that were natural gas-powered.
Correct. It, it will add more to the purchase of the vehicle to come, to buy it, CNG.
Okay.
It'll add another, I think, between 30 and 50,000 to the final price of the vehicle.
Okay. Another question? Hold on one second, though. But, but what's the, in cost of fuel, I mean, in looking at, you, you, these buses will last in how long?
The, right now, currently, the CNG is still a, a new technology, so the CNG will, probably won't last as long as a diesel currently, mainly because of the wear and tear that the CNG puts on the vehicle, engine-wise.
Well, I heard just the opposite. And we just bought a whole fleet of sanitation trucks that promise you don't get, I mean, get a lot more beat up than, than those, so I'm just saying, I think we need to do some thorough research, 'cause you might pay more upfront...
Yeah.
But in the life of the vehicle, I mean, there's technology coming out every day.
And that's, that, that's the biggest thing right now, is whenever we do purchase something like that, the FTA requires that the facility be able to maintain it, and you gotta have explosion-proof lighting, explosion-proof, you know, all of that has gotta be upgraded with the vehicle.
Okay.
Or else the FTA will cease funding it. So, that's the other end of the equation.
Okay. Sorry, Ms. Allen, go ahead. On the... The 35-foot bus, which was, looks like considerably more expensive than the smaller buses, which would be less maneuverable, did we need a, what do you call it, Eldorado, or the large bus?
Yes, we currently were outgrowing in, in some of the routes. We were actually having to trail the international with a 15-passenger van because of the ridership. So, we did outgrow the current bus.
Okay, so, that was my next question, occupancy, so you had some routes where you were actually having to run trail one bus with another, just to pick up all the riders, and...
Yes, we've, we've had to do that some, on, on a few routes, yes.
Okay.
You ever come around a bus with us sometimes?
Well, I've done it before, I did the south route before, yes.
The price difference between the two buses is surprisingly not that much more than, than the...
In the beginning, at the 2005, it was around 120 to 130,000...
For the smaller bus.
For the internationals that we currently have, but now, they're sitting at 190 to almost 200,000, which is really just $100,000 less, well, actually, yeah, $100,000 less than the Eldorado.
The 35-foot, okay. Anything else? Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, Council, consent agenda. Is there anything on a consent agenda Council like to consider separately? If not, may I have a motion?
I'll move.
Have a motion? Second-in-law, favor say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Zoning and public hearing items. A, public hearing, consider application number S-1401, Mr. Michael Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor.
And by the way, congratulations on your interim directorship.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant, Longview Steamer LLC, is requesting a specific use permit for a restaurant with private club. This is located at the Longview Town Crossing, addressed at 3084 Northeast Monroe. This is located in a general retail zoning area. The future land use map for this area is light intensity business, a scenario view. This is the Old Fish City Grill Restaurant. It's a backed-out aerial view, it's in front of the strip area there. This is kind of a picture, kinda looking at the building, it's kinda, it's not as bright on the TVs, and I apologize for that, kinda in the, in the process of remodeling, kinda showing the nearby areas, and looking back. But they are requesting SUP for private club with, a restaurant with private club. The purpose for that is anytime you have restaurants that serve more than just beer and wine, with the mixed beverages, the general retail generally are near residential areas, not quite the case on this situation, but it does give us the opportunity to look at those and make sure there's gonna be no negative impact in this situation. Not being near a residential area should not be an impact. PNZ and staff do recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Gary?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think that Mr. Shirley did a great job on it, because some on, some on, some of the other previous planning and zoning items, and over here, you just wasn't doing it for me, I just really couldn't understand that. But with this street view of that particular item you just posted, I think he did a great job with that.
Thank you. We'll make sure that those are in your packet in the future also. We had some issues with the size of the pictures, but we've worked that out, and you'll, you'll begin getting those in your packets.
Thank you, Mr. Shirley.
Any other questions?
This folks out of Birmingham?
Do, uh...
This the folks out of Birmingham, this company? I was saying, for the mayor, 'cause they're gonna have some more Alabama memorabilia in there.
No.
Just for my LSU friends over there.
Excuse me, but the primary owner is from LSU. He actually is.
I stand corrected.
Okay, this item requires a public hearing, I do not have any speaker cards, is there anyone here who would like to speak to this matter? They're not being so, may I have a mo, public hearing closed, may I have a motion? Have a motion?
Second.
Second-in-law, favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Action items. A, consider an ordinance accepting a budget amendment in the amount of $467,26. Mr. Bonds?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. At the March 27th Council meeting, there was a presentation given to Council about the schematic plan for the proposed animal shelter, and at that time, was, staff was given direction to take the next step, and the next step would be to acquire design services for the animal shelter, and we have negotiated a contract with Larry Conley of Conley Architects, was the gentleman that did the schematic design, and we have, like I said, negotiated this price. This covers his architectural fees, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, structural engineering, geotechnical engineering, the whole works for the design of the shelter, also includes his construction visits and that kinda thing throughout construction, so this amount of money will be allocated from the general fund reserves.
This, um, this amount, in other words, he'll, he'll actually have a complete package ready to go to bidders?
That's correct. And also includes his construction funds, that he uses during construction to observe, so...
That's less than we've seen in the past on other projects. Questions? Mr. Allen?
Mr. Bonds, the $467,726, how did we arrive at that figure?
That represents about 8.5% of the construction cost.
Okay. The standard architectural fee then?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Can we make a comment? In, in some other projects we've looked at, it's been closer to the 12 to 15%.
Can we make a comment now, it'd be better for the next one?
What's that?
Comment? Oh, okay, all right. Thank you, sir. Okay. I, I would just like to make a comment here, that this, this is an open process. I've been fortunate to go twice myself to the Dallas area with local Longview staff and visit two animal shelters over there, and we've looked at their plans, in fact, we took our plans over and had them reviewed by a couple of the shelters in Dallas, and they gave us several, quite a bit of input on what they liked, and some different things they saw that we might change, and the point I wanna make is, this is an open project. It's not, we're not just gonna sign off on a finished architectural fee and then find out later that we made a mistake. This is a working process. Everybody that's interested in this, I know the committee needs to get involved, again, this is an open process. We certainly want to build a shelter that works when we open the front door. We don't wanna build something and a week later, or a month later, say, "You know, this was a stupid mistake to do it this way, we should've done it different." That's the objective, is to not have that happen, so those of y'all who are interested, talk to your Council people, get involved, and let's make sure this is a project that works when we open the front door. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Okay, any other questions, comments?
I got one more.
Okay, go ahead, Richard.
I gotta say that I've come 180 degrees on this over the course of this process, because I, I felt like that my constituents and most citizens in Longview thought that this was a pretty pricey prospect to build something like this. And I gotta tell ya, almost to a man or a woman, I've had 80, 90% of the people that I've talked to in my district and some people outside my district have said, "We need to do this as a city." So, I'm on board. Quit grinning down there, Ms. Williams. I'm on board with this project, I think it makes a lot of sense, and from here on out, what I wanna do is make sure we're getting the best bang for our buck, just like Mr. Allen was saying. And then we have to have a conversation about the operational cost, 'cause there's an enormous operational cost for our city, that if we were to incur that, it would be a big hit to our budget, and I think Mr. Willard would have a tough time, as would our assistant city manager and others, to find the dollars to fund that. So, let's get this thing done, let's build it right, get our, get our money's worth, and, and we'll have a further discussion later on the operational cost.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second-in-law, favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Keith. Y'all did a good job in negotiating, that's a, it sounds like a lot of money, but compared to projects we've seen, that, very good. Okay, you're staying, so that must mean item B, consider resolution authorizing, why don't you go ahead and read all that stuff?
This would authorize the city manager to actually enter into the agreement with Conley Architects, now that we have the money to pay him, so...
Okay. Questions, comments? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second-in-law, favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you, sir. Okay, he's here for the considering.
Still standing here.
Item C, resolution approving conversion of certain private oil dirt streets. Mr. Bonds?
Yeah, this is a, a interesting proposal we're bringing to Council. This is a, a project that was brought to us by some citizens. I'll first start to define maybe what an old dirt road is, or old dirt street, old dirt street. It's a unique paving technique that maybe just in rural Texas. I looked around on Google, like, you know, to get all your information, and I couldn't really find many people that did this type of paving, but as far as I know, it's kinda developed by these Texas oilfield service companies, and where we actually just spray oil on the native materials and mix it in. I've kinda got a couple of drawings or photographs that may show asphalt distributing truck actually applying the oil directly on the pavement, and this is a mixer and mix it in, and our Gregg County does this service for us here. So, in background for this, in 1980, the city of Longview annexed 8.8 square miles of area in northwest Longview, and at that time, the city obtained a list of streets from the county that said the county was maintaining these streets as county streets, or county roads, and so, we have been maintaining those same streets. We haven't added, we haven't taken them off, so in other words, if you, your street was on the list, the county said they were maintaining it at that time, the city maintained. If you weren't on the list, we weren't. So, simple as that. Since that time, the county has continued to maintain those streets through the inter-local agreement. They've been using their manpower and their equipment, and we've been paying the bills for the materials, firstly, the oil. So, recently, like I said, we've had some maintenance requests for citizens that are living on the private streets, and they would like for their streets to be maintained. So, we went out and looked at all the streets, there were like 15 of those private oil dirt streets in northwest Longview. Six of them were gated, that had no access. I'll be honest, my mother lives on one, her street is gated. She didn't want anybody in there, so she's not on the list. So, the county inspected the other streets.
Tough, man.
She's not gonna get her street paved, so... So, the county inspected the streets, and we just checked with them to see if they thought they, you know, were able to do them. So, at that time, like I said, there are three different streets. Oil and gas service roads only were some of the streets, they had no residents, we had the gated, no public access. Then we had some fully public access, if you drove down the street, you would know it was a private street, in other words. So, this is the proposal, streets that lie in both District 5 and Precinct 1 of Gregg County, you know, if you overlap those two areas. Only full public access streets will be considered. Landowners would have to agree to grant the city right-of-way by Fee Simple, we want a 50-foot minimum right-of-way, that's why we require all our subdivisions to have, and then the county would agree to maintain those through the inter-local agreement. Now, it would bring the streets up to the oil dirt standard, it wouldn't make them an asphalt or curb and gutter street or anything, so they wouldn't have a lot of potholes in them, though. These are the streets, Cobb, Doleahite, Nandina, Westmoreland, Panther, Hitching Post, and Restoration. I've got a map that would kinda show you, says very northwest quadrant of the city. I've got a map that would kind of show you, says very northwest quadrant of the city. Streets in red, some of them are very short. One of them that some people might recognize, this is Panther, this is actually, there's some baseball fields in here, and the pine trees over football stadium is over here. So that's actually a non-maintained private street. So one of the streets, just so you, this is Doleahite, it's a little bit longer one, and Hitching Post is long. The rest of them are just a few hundred feet long. So, all of them together, a little bit less than a mile, 9,700 square yards, they're like 18 feet wide, most of them. Cost us about $5,000 in oil. So, that's the proposal.
Questions? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Frost.
Would this include any kind of drainage, bar ditches, or anything like that?
Yes, some of them have small ditches. And the city would maintain those, but they're virtually insignificant. Most of them are just no ditches at all, it's just kind of flat.
Okay. Ms. Williams?
$5,000 total?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, hang on a second, I think, did you have some? Okay, go ahead.
On the land, the Fee Simple means the land will transfer in title to the city of Longview?
That's correct.
Are we purchasing this land, or how do we come about?
No, I would, we would, the proposal I've brought to you would be that they would be required to donate. So if we go along, some of these streets, like I said, some of those longer ones have several property owners on them. So if one property owner is not willing, that's going to kind of trump everybody.
Okay, so it'll depend on the generosity of the property owners if they want a good, a better street?
Yeah, in other words, if he didn't want to give it to the city, we're not willing to buy it, and certainly not going to condemn property rights.
Okay. Alright, go ahead.
Okay, and I may have missed it somewhere. With these streets that we're going to upgrade with the new oil dirt mix, okay, does that mean they're now going to be a part of our regular rotation of streets that you guys use when you go out and evaluate the streets? And so they'll be prioritized just as the other streets that we maintain in the city limits?
That's right. And how we do the oil dirt streets every year, we'll pick out a few that are in bad condition, we'll send a request over to the county, say, would you guys consider re-oiling these? Under the interlocal agreement, we pay for the oil, you'd use your equipment and men, and it's worked fairly well since 1980, as much as I understand.
Because if I'm hearing you, those streets have not had any maintenance since 1980?
1980, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any plans to add to this list?
No, that is, we've looked at all of them in that area. And that's, I looked at all the private streets in town, all the oil dirt streets. We have other oil dirt streets in all the districts, but they're all public already.
Yeah, these, these are actually private.
Well, I've got a couple.
Remember the 2011 bond election? We addressed a whole bunch of those public streets in that.
Yeah, we have forty-something miles of oil dirt roads in town.
Yeah, like LaFamo and, and some of those were addressed through the 2011 bond election. Okay? But this is only addressing private, if you will, roads. Yes, sir?
And, hey, Mr. Bonds? Let me make sure I'm clear on this, Mr. Bonds. Is that the city will supply the materials, and the county will provide, assuming the tractors or the equipment used to-
That's correct.
Actually lady-
Yes. Precinct One has already indicated that they're willing to do that.
The oil dirt, okay.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Manley?
So a couple things to say on this. This, this all got started with a couple of calls from some of my constituents, all these folks are in my district. And I've driven the roads, and they're miserable roads. I mean, they're just huge potholes. I'm driving in a F-150 truck and bouncing around like I'm in a Volkswagen Beetle. And there, and there's roads like this all over town. And just because we're doing these doesn't mean we don't do other cities. But these are streets that were definitely neglected and have been for a long, long time. And a lot of folks in my district are still angry about being, about being annexed, you know, 20 or 30 years ago. And so this is a holdover from that. Second thing I want to say is this is a real testament to how our city and our county can work together. And Rodney McKinney, who's the Precinct One Commissioner, is a very fine man and wants to do anything he can to help us and the city, wherever that happens to be, and whatever district it happens to be. He just wants, he wants to take care of the people in his county, and recognizes a lot of them are in the city of Longview. And I want to thank Mr. McKinney and the county commissioners for their support here.
Okay. Anything else? If not, may I have a motion?
To approve.
Have a motion? Second, all favor say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Items of community interest. Mr. Sims?
Well, this is a sad night for me. This is the last council meeting, my old friend Wayne Frost.
Oh, God, no.
Yeah, but that's one you leave on. Now, this is that, won't she take her seat the next one?
No.
Oh, one more? Okay, well then I'm-
I mean, it's still your thunder, but go ahead.
She wants to, will she?
No, hey, hey. But anyway, just a little-
That's gonna be a tough deal.
Postscript. Sure I'm gonna miss you, buddy.
I'll miss you, I'll too.
Mr. Garrett?
All right. First of all, Mr. Mayor, I, I got an opportunity to go out to the new student center, the Lee, Lee Ternal, a couple of weeks ago. And I want to say thank you to Ms. Anna Lee and Mr. Cindy Allen for their dedication commitment to this community and to that school. And it really looks good. It has some amazing collaboration rooms on the inside of it, and it's really state-of-the-art out at the Lee Ternal Student Center. So whoever hadn't got an opportunity to go out and take a look at it, you know, visually on the outside and the inside, it's incredible. Number two, I went out to Dalton Day.
God.
Dalton Day about a couple of weeks ago. And of course, you know, the location of the Dalton Day, the Longview was located in my, in the southwest district number two. I call it the sports and entertainment district, but I went out there to show our support for Dalton Day. And-
Did they give you a gun?
I, I was in one of the dramatizations, for sure.
You were shooting?
No. And number three, I went out to the, let's see, went downtown to the Crimson Building to, I forgot what it, I got a short mind now. But they're having a drug plant where if you got some old medication in your medication cabinet or something, you can take it to Louis Morgan Drug, CVS, and you can turn those in to be, I guess, thrown away. And I think that's going on Saturday in the city at, from 10 o'clock to 2:00 P.M. So if you got any old medication, carry it out there to Louis Morgan Drug or CVS. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Garrett. Okay, Ms. Cashin?
First of all, I want to acknowledge the CEO of Good Shepherd Medical Center, Mr. Steve Altmeier is here tonight. Good to see you out this evening, thank you for what you're doing in our community. Secondly, we have a new public relations tool at the city of Longview, City View. It's an update that will be on Channel Five. I want to thank staff, Terry Miller and his staff, for developing this concept. It's designed to be more transparent with our citizens, and will keep you updated on the different goings-on within our community, and will be hosted by our own, Ms. Robin Hundley. So that's a good thing, and thanks for that. Looking forward to seeing more come out of our public relations department for the city of Longview. Third, financial literacy workshop will be this Saturday at Broughton Recreation Center from 8:00 to 1:45. It's open to the entire community. It's going to be a really great, I'm sorry, Stamper Resource Center. I'm getting ahead of myself. From 8:00 to 1:45, all people in the community are encouraged to come out. Last but not least, this is something really near and dear to my heart. On Sunday, at Broughton Recreation Center, which is within my district, we will host a community peace rally. There have been some recent murders in Longview and in my district specifically. I always defend our police department, they do a fine job, because I know what the crime was like in the late 80s and early 90s, and my, as the commercial used to say, you've come a long way, baby. But we want to kick off the summer right, and we want to do it with everyone in our community standing in solidarity and unity, asking for peace and the stopping of violence right now. Please do come out and join us, I'm looking forward to it. The time on the flyer is actually wrong, it's going to begin at 5:30, and will end with a candlelight vigil. One thing we have to be mindful of is that regardless of causality, everyone is someone's child, someone's brother, someone's sister, whatever the situation may be. We all have loved ones. So this is a grassroots effort, and I just encourage everyone in our community to come out and stand with us against violence. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Frost?
In the morning, at 2:00 at Hensley Park, we're gonna have a ribbon cutting for the new Disc Golf course.
2:00 in the morning? Yes, Sidney, you'd be there 2:00, they'll, they'll be looking for you.
10:00. This, actually, they, they hold tournaments, and it's just like baseball, soccer, whatever, bring tournaments to town. They do have the tournaments to bring these people to town. So it'll be open tomorrow, out of Hensley Park, 10:00 in the morning.
Okay. Mr. Richard?
Yeah, a couple of things. I'm a proud Interbel ACP member, and I'm really happy to see that financial literacy class on Saturday morning. I'd like to encourage people to come out, I am bringing the donuts, so please come out on Saturday morning.
Fat-free ones, I know.
Of course. Well, if you break them in half, there's no calories, that's why you break them in half. Secondly, hurrah, hurrah, we started the George Ritchie Road Extension recently, and that's in my district, I'm just thrilled about that. That's gonna be, I think, one of the biggest, one of the biggest projects in our city for a long, long time, so we're excited about that. Next, in front of you have is the, is our vision statement from the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Council. It's the vision we've established for our comprehensive plan, to make us all emphasize the fact that it feels like home. Second thing is, there are seven subcommittees, these are the seven subcommittees. We need folks who have expertise and interest, of course, we want you to be involved. We especially want folks who are interested and have some expertise or experience in any one of these seven committees. And please call the city manager's office and volunteer, we'd love to have you. Next, Amberwood, May 6th, and I'm announcing this because it's gonna happen before our next meeting. On May 6th, they're having a grand opening, this is a tremendous asset, and in addition to our community's 78 apartments, and I've been in these places, folks, they're beautiful. They are like an above-market-rate quality place, and because of the tax abatements that are afforded to the builders, they can rent at under-market rate. And anyway, it's just a great addition to our city, so please come out to the Amberwood celebration, and you'll see all the art that the kids did. Last, if you haven't heard, T-Bone Walker Festival is coming here from London. This is a very big deal. We could have 100,000 people in our city over the course of a weekend. And this, the dates are September 12th and 13th, September 12th and 13th, so please put it on your calendar. This is a very big deal, and if you have an interest, please get involved, make a contribution, be a sponsor, or come out and volunteer when the time comes. This is a great thing for our city. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Allen?
Now, that fella cut his first record in 1929, he's still around playing? Did I miss something?
It's the Greg Hoo.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, I'm gonna come watch that fella. No, everything, thank you, I just want to say thank you again that we're moving forward on the animal shelter, I believe we've got a wonderful plan, and please get involved. Thank you.
Okay. Early voting dates, man, it's here already. Time for District Three is as follows. Monday, April 28th through Friday, May the 2nd, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Saturday, May 3rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And then Monday, May 5th, Tuesday, May 6th, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. All early voting will be conducted in the lobby of City Hall at 300 West Cotton Street. Election Day is Saturday, May 10th, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Broughton Recreation Center, 801 South MLK Boulevard for the District Three voters. City of Longview and Longview Main Street are joining forces to celebrate Alley Fest and the Historic Depot Days on Friday, May 9th through Saturday, May 10th. This year's Alley Fest is partnering with the city of Longview to celebrate the grand opening of the Historic Train Depot. In addition to the annual Alley Art Music Fest, Kids Fest, and Alley Run activities, the event will also feature tours of the Historic Depot, tours of Amtrak Exhibit Train, tours of the Historic Central Fire Station, an antique car show, and other 1940s-era activities. Just to, to sort of piggyback on Ms. Williams' statements about the recent crime and violence activities, one, one of the first things when I was elected mayor in 2005, a lot of you remember, we were having drive-by shootings, especially down Lily Street, and that was the first development of the unity in the community effort to try to get out and, and get into our neighborhoods and, and try to talk to people about this crime and violence. And, and I want to call on some of these political action organizations that, that get real worked up about a lot of things. There's nothing more important than this in your community. So let's, let's move the community forward, and let's get involved with how we try to work with the police department in trying to stop some of this crime. A lot of it's our kids. You know, we have mentors coming from throughout the community to try to mentor these kids. Go to the Boys and Girls Club any day of the week, and, and look at how many kids are there, and, and the people that are trying to help. But, but why don't we all pull together on some positive things and try to work together as a community to try to talk to these children, and, and try to get them understanding, you know, what, what this violence does. I mean, there's too many young children, you know, being killed, and, and we've got to try to stem that. And I call on all of these organizations, let, let's get involved with some of these kind of things that really, you know, we can do something about in, in, in trying to, you know, help the entire community. Today, we announced that the Fourth of July Celebration, the, the primary act has been selected. I'm, I'm proud to, to announce that Neil McCoy, you know, a local patriot here, one of our local good guys, you know, it's, it was very interesting today during the news conference, Neil said, you know, except for the Angel Network, a lot, a lot of people don't get to come to my shows, you know? And he's excited about being here and about bringing the community out. One, one of the important things, remember about the celebration, is that there's something for everybody, every age group, and the majority of it is free. And, and let me tell you, you know, you're talking about a guy that was twice selected as a Country Music Entertainer of the Year, right here from Longview. He's touring this summer with the hottest country music act in the business, Blake Shelton. Matter of fact, somebody said, you think he's gonna bring Blake? I said, I'd rather him bring Miranda than Blake, shoot. But, 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 and Blake, alright, here we go. But, you know, the thing is, I mean, he stepped forward and worked out the logistics to be here. You know, the guy, I mean, has represented the president in the Philippines for the inauguration. He was invited to state dinners at the White House. He's been on USO tours, you know, performing for, you know, our heroes, the veterans. So it's a great day in Longview that we have our own stepping forward to make this a special celebration. Also, we have a young lady by the name of Holly Fuller, that's also gonna be the opening act for Neil. She was recently on The Voice and did very well. Matter of fact, I don't know if any of you watch it, but she got all four chairs to turn around. And that's a big deal in that particular show, I've been watching it. But, a, a, as part of that, let me say another thing, a lot, not a lot, but a few people have, have had things to say about, not necessarily in a positive manner, about the Longview Patriot Program. That was, that was my program. And, and it was my program because I had people calling me, asking me how they could, could make sure that the Fourth of July Celebration remained whole. We stumbled out the blocks, we made mistakes, we said that already. And, and let's move forward. But, but they wanted to make sure that a lot of them have employees. There was 12,000 people at that event last year. And there's a lot of big companies here that participate in that program because they wanted to make sure that their employees had something to do as well. It wasn't nothing, you know, scurrilous or sinister, it was a good, honest, wholesome attempt by a group of business people and individuals to make sure that that event didn't suffer because some of the mistakes that were made. So that, that, that's what that's about. And last, I want to comment on Kevin Cummings and, and that whole program, okay? Since, since I've been on the city council, the, 1998, I guess I'm the old one over here, don't, don't give me that, Mr. Anyway, developmental services has been sort of a thorn in every one of these council members' side. We've had the reputation, we're hard to develop, we're hard to do business with in Longview, and we make things difficult for the builders, and heck, I see old Dan Droge sitting here, the bankers, the bankers can tell you about it. And, and we've tried. When Mr. Willard was hired, the very first director he had from the city council was Go Fix Development Services, okay? And during that process, Chuck Ewing's was first asked to, as, as the Assistant City Manager, to get involved with that whole, you know, department and try to come up with solutions. In defense of Chuck, Chuck was not a process guy. In defense of Chuck, Chuck was not a process guy. You know, in business, when things don't work, it's the process, it's the people, or it's a combination of both. And I see the CEO of Good Shepherd back here saying, anybody that's in business, that's the same thing for all of us. So, you know, and Mr. Ewing's then chose Kevin Cummings. Kevin was a great, you know, environmental health guy, he did a great job at that. But he, you know, he stepped up to try to be that director, and it just didn't work. And I'm not here to, you know, to criticize him, I wish him the best of luck, and hopefully will be a good reference for the man. But we've got to get Developmental Services to a point now where the citizens are confident that, you know, it's a department that will properly serve the residents of Longview. And there are other areas of the city, we have to look and make sure that, you know, our logo is, we're a high-performing organization. Well, by God, we need to be a high-performing organization, and we need to look at every area to make sure that's exactly what we are, so. And that was part of the restructuring that took place, you know, a month or so ago, to make sure that we're that high-performing organization. And we're gonna make mistakes, but I can assure you, a day won't go by that we're not fully focused and working hard to make sure that this city provides the service to the citizens of Longview that they expect and they demand from each one of us elected officials. Tonight, we're not gonna have executive session, so the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.